All right, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the Planning Commission meeting for September the 17th. And it looks like we have a quorum. Carolyn, any public comments?
No comments.
All right. Moving on, can we, anybody have any changes or amendments to the September 3rd, 2025 Planning Commission meeting minutes?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Vice Chair Eva Water.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Rollins.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
All right, next item on our agenda, our consent agenda items. Anybody have any questions, want to remove any of these, or do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Vice Chair Eva Water. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Rollins.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Halliburton.
Aye. Next item is GDO items. First item is on motion, the villages of Murfreesboro Phase Two Final Design Review and Site Plan Review for 14 multifamily residential dwelling units at an existing assisted care living senior's living facility on 10 acres, zoned MU GDO One and GDO Two located along Willow Oak Trail and Wilkinson Pike. Good Works Unlimited LLC is the developer. Mr. Barbie.
Good afternoon, Chair Halliburton and members of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. This next application before you is the villages of Murfreesboro Phase Two. This is the Final Design Review and Site Plan Review for 14 multifamily residential dwelling units at an existing assisted care living senior living facility. As you can see on the screen before you, this property is located currently along Willow Oak Trail. The new area is going to be added to the east, or northeast of the existing facility, and will share the current entrance along Willow Oak Trail. It's also proposing a new entrance point along Wilkinson Pike. If I can shrink this down so it's easier to see. The 14 units are centrally located. The design team has worked with TVA in order to get those decided so that they do actually face the public right of ways without any rears of the buildings becoming visible. The access, it does propose a new access road for circulation around the existing facility. Parking will be provided in the driveways as well as existing parking for visitors and guests on the facility as it stands today. Building architecture hasn't changed since the previous meeting on August 20th. As you can see, it does have the required defined base body and cap. Structure colors are consistent with the residential demeanor, and building materials match the requirements for our Gateway Overly District. The site is heavily landscaped, has the required base of building plantings. They have a meandering hedgerow through the green space area along Wilkinson Pike and Willow Oak Trail throughout the easement area as they were not able to plant any trees due to the easement from Tennessee Valley Authority. The site is, plan is generally in good order. We would ask that any approval is made subject to staff comments.
Any questions for Mr. Barbie? If there are none, any discussion?
If there are no questions, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Vice Chair Eva Water.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Rollins.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Halliburton.
Aye. Next item on our agenda is the Chase Bank Final Design Review and Site Plan Review for 3,333 square foot bank on 1.12 acres zone, commercial highway in GDO One, located along Medical Center Parkway, sorry about that. JP Morgan Chase Bank is the developer. Mr. Barbie.
Good afternoon again. This application before you is, was also previously before you on August 20th. Generally, the site layout is exactly the same as it was previously. Does have a shared entry point along Medical Center Parkway. This location as well as a shared entry point along Robby Corlins Lane, along the north side of the property. The properties, or the site has been designed to provide a drive-through window for their banking customers. It's located also to the rear opposite Medical Center Parkway. Side landscaping, they have provided the required landscaping for both base of building, perimeter, frontages. We are continuing to work through some opportunities with Consolidated Utility District for final landscape. Got some additional information this morning, and I'm still confident we're going to be able to, to come to an agreement. Site is generally in good order, and staff would request that any approval is made subject to staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Barbie. Any questions for Mr. Barbie? If there are none, discussion or motion?
Move for approval, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Vice Chair Eva Water.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Rollins.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Halliburton.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is Plats and Plans. Under there, under that is Salem Landing Section Three, Master Plan Amendment and preliminary plat for 203 lots on 69.1 acres zone PRD located along Collection Lane and Thompson Road. Salem Land Company LLC is the developer. Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Chair Halliburton, and good afternoon. So the item before you today is to amend the master plan for Salem Landing by adding Salem Landing Three, which was rezoned at the end of last year and annexed into the city. Before you on the screen, you should see the master plan that includes approximately 565 lots. Also included in this approval is the preliminary plat, which includes 203 lots to be developed in four phases, along with amenities that include the walk-in trail, basketball courts, a dog park, as well as the mail kiosk. Staff has reviewed both the master plan and the preliminary plat, and they're in generally good order. Staff recommends approval of the master, amended master plan and preliminary plat subject to staff comment. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Mr. McGuire is here to answer any questions as well.
Any questions for Mr. Donovan? If there are none, any discussion or, or motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Subject to all staff comments.
Vice Chair Eva Water.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Rollins.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Donovan, we have good memories with this one, don't we?
Jamie just wants to know where the matter.
We did, I was looking for some mouse ears for you, but I couldn't find them.
Did you figure out where the matter horn was going to go, Mr. Donovan?
We're still working on that one.
All right, good.
All right, we'll get back to our agenda here. Under New Business, zoning application for approximately .29 acres located along East Burton Street and North Springs Street to be rezoned from RM 12 and CCO to OGR and CCO. Brad Chambers is the applicant. Ms. Smith.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commission. As you see on the above aerial, the site is located here on the north westerly corner of East Burton and North Springs Street. The current zoning is RM 12, as well as all of those lots to the north of the property, as well as to the northeast of the property, RS 8 on the opposite corners, and then OGR directly to the south. This particular project is within what we call our North Highlands Planning Study Area. You don't see too many of these projects, but it basically identifies several character areas, and the red represents kind of our future downtown business district that's anticipated in those plans. That's a visionary document and guidance. I did want to include this for some of you who might be newer to the Planning Commission and are not aware of the document. You can get it on our Planning Department website, but these are just two excerpted pages. And you can see here under the use section, what kind of uses does it want to see in our future downtown footprint, and it includes retail, restaurant, office, residential, institutional, and structured parking. So this particular request, you may recall a couple years back, we approved a three-story rooftop, three-town home type subdivision, not subdivision, townhome development on this corner. And here in our general plan, this red area represents that same red area we were looking at at the North Highlands Plan, so it's just on the kind of edge of where we want to see that future downtown, and it's within less than 750 feet from a actual structured parking lot. So in our city core overlay, which is another overlay in this district, it does allow for commercial parking to get a 75% reduction if it's within that radius. So as the applicant's worked on executing the project, he really wanted to have the ability not to just have like a home occupation on the ground floor with the residential on the upper floors, but potentially a way to have an office space on those ground floors versus the other. So OGR is what actually staff, when we looked at all the policies as well as the existing adjacent, as I mentioned, the property right across the street is also zoned OGR, and most of the things in our downtown are OGR designated, or CH designated, or CBD, which is kind of the no parking zone. So based on our current comprehensive plan, it actually differs directly to that North Highlands Plan, and it says if you're having future zone changes, follow the plan, go through that section, and so that's what we're doing here, and recommending that we set a public hearing for the October 1st nighttime meeting, and should you have any questions or other things that you'd like us to make sure we include in the packet, we can do that as well. So with that, any questions or setting of the public hearing?
Questions or comments for Ms. Smith? If there are none, need to make a motion?
Move to schedule the public hearing for October 1st.
Second.
Vice Chair Eva Water.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Rollins.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Halliburton.
Aye. Next item under New Business is a zoning application for approximately .72 acres located along Bridge Avenue to be rezoned from RS 10 to PND, and to amend the existing PND zoning, Transit Center PND for approximately 5.4 acres located along New Salem Highway and Bridge Avenue. Wego Public Transit is the applicant. Ms. Smith.
So this particular project, we've been working on for a couple of years as the city has been constructing the Transit Center, which just recently opened, if you haven't seen it yet. So you'll see on the aerial, the area designated in green previously was a church. The church sold the property to the Wego RTPA group, and it has been recently removed in preparations for this coordinated park and ride facility. Because citywide, we do not have the ability to have a standalone parking lot. It's a prohibited use. We had always anticipated about a year, year and a half ago that it would be part of our city's planned institutional district program book. So our program book, and I just took a one-page excerpt out of this just so you can kind of see it in its context, because the aerial looked like it didn't have the most up-to-date one, but if you look on the current aerials, all of these facilities are actually in place on the city's transit facility and operational, but the intent is that folks can actually park at this facility. They have actually extended this sidewalk adjacent to the property so that it could enter at this location down here. And then currently, there's this, I'll call it, building that you can actually wait for your bus if you want to, and for long-term, it also has restroom facilities, but the gate that you come through here is locked at a certain time of the day, and the perimeter of our current transit facility is also fenced fully, and the only other entry points are up here at the side where there actually is currently a sidewalk that comes into the site, I believe at this location.
That's correct.
Yes. And then there are gates there for when the bus traffic can come in and out. No regular vehicles can come in at this particular point at the project site, but what they'd like to be able to see is that capability of if somebody, let's say is a one-car family, they drop off the person, they can then get on the transit. Wego Transit actually provides transit in between Murfreesboro and Nashville. Yes. So as we're looking at it, we're still kind of working at lightning speed to try to update their site plan, so this is, wanted to share with you their anticipated site plan, which we are currently in process of reviewing. Our city teams are going to be meeting out in the field to make sure that how we incorporate things in the program book will work for both sites, because as they have constructed some of the landscape, for example, they said, well, geez, if we're not a church next to our plan development, we won't have this type D buffer, as an example, right? So when we were building our facility, some of those assumptions were taken into consideration so that at the full site, they can function really together, but still be owned separately from the city and the Wego, and ultimately, council will most likely have an MOU in the process, and then because this is a zone change, Planning Commission would make its recommendation after their public hearing, which we are recommending for the October 1st date, and then it will ultimately go to council for their final one. But we will have by Monday, the program pages that are going to be in the book, amending the book, so it does two things. It will change the green area site from its current RS, single-family residential status to a PND, and then we're actually amending the entire PND, so that's that 5.4 acres by incorporating this, and we'll update kind of landscape buffers, setbacks, those specific things. So we're excited about the project. If you, again, haven't seen the new facility yet, it's coming along great, and they're working there all this week, and I think last week, and staff recommends to set the public hearing for October 1st for the rezone, and we anticipate their site plan will be coming pretty close to concurrent because they're wanting to build the site, and we're losing the season, so we'll probably see their site plan next month and not be implemented until council makes a final determination.
All right, any questions for Ms. Smith? If there are none, do we have a motion?
Move to set the public hearing for October 1st.
Second.
Vice Chair Eva Water.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Rollins.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Thank you, Commission.
All right, next item on our agenda is an annexation petition in Plan of Services for approximately 32.1 acres located along Salem Road. Sherry Wade Metzler is the applicant. Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Chair Halliburton. So the annexation that we're considering this afternoon includes one parcel that has an abandoned, single-family detached home on it, and it is situated just to the north of Old Salem Road, that you can see on the map there. The annexation area also includes approximately 3,000 linear feet of Old Salem right-of-way. On September 2nd, the Rutherford County Highway Commission reviewed and consented to the annexation of that right-of-way, and this total study area is approximately 32.1 acres in size. This petition for annexation also has a companion rezoning, which will be the next item that we review to rezon, or to zone the property. Planned Residential District, Old Salem is the name of that PRD, and it contemplates 66 single-family detached homes as well as 32 single-family attached homes. The annexation study area is within the city's urban growth boundary. It is contiguous to the existing city limits along its eastern margin or northeastern margin to the, in this area, as well as a, or I'm sorry, that's the northern boundary, not the northeastern, and then contiguous along the eastern to a prior annexation that this body considered that is on its, working its way through city council, just to the east. It is also within the service infill line area mentioned in the comprehensive plan. Staff is currently working with other city staff to prepare a plan of services on how this area would be served if annexed into the city, and will provide that to the Planning Commission at the public hearing. Planning Commission will need to discuss the annexation petition and schedule a public hearing. Staff is recommending that public hearing for November 5th.
Any questions for Mr. Donovan?
Move to set the public hearing for November 5th.
Second.
Vice Chair Eva Water.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Rollins.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Halliburton.
Aye. The next item is the companion zoning application for approximately 27.9 acres located along Old Salem Road to be zoned PRD simultaneous with annexation. Patterson Company LLC is the applicant. Mr. Donovan.
Thank you again, Chair Halliburton. So this is the companion rezoning for the 28-acre parcel being considered for annexation along Old Salem Road. So as far as adjacent land use and surrounding zoning, what's primarily around this is single-family residential with a few utility uses in the area as well, but it's all zoned residentially. To the north along Winderoe Row is zoned PUD, and that is the Merrimont Springs PUD. CUD also has a pump station, and MTE has a substation located along Winderoe Row as well. There's also some single-family detached residential that is within the unincorporated county and zoned RM, their medium-density residential in the county, and that RM zoning extends along the western and southern portions of the, our southern properties as well. Those are all within the unincorporated county as well. So the PRD itself, and let me get to a overview of the development, consists of 66 detached single-family homes and 32 attached single-family homes. So the attached homes are concentrated in the middle of the development with the single-family detached surrounding it. The 66 detached homes will have a minimum lot size of 6,000 square foot with minimum lot widths of 50 feet. They were, will adhere to our typical front setback of 35 feet. They are asking for an exception when it comes to the, what I call the secondary front, which is when you have a corner lot and it has two fronts, on the second front where the garage won't be facing, they're requesting to have a 25-foot front setback, and that would reduce that setback by 10 feet instead of what we would typically see in a 35-foot requirement there. The sides are five foot, and the rear would be 20 feet. And the 32 single-family attached homes, these of course will be a horizontal property regime. There are a few exceptions here for setbacks, and if you kind of notice their location, it'll make a little bit sense why they're requesting the exceptions that they are. The front is proposed to be at 20 feet, which would typically be a 30-foot, 35 feet. If you notice, these are all proposed to be rear-loaded, so there won't be any driveways along the front. Then typically, that 35 feet helps provide driveway parking in those areas. And they're also asking for an exception from the secondary front, so that side, that side that also faces a street, from the 35 foot to 15. As far as other setbacks for the attached, there are 10 feet between built-on minimums, and then from the rear setback of the main building and garage face to the alley curb, they're proposing a 25-foot setback. As far as architecturals for the single-family attached homes, what's being proposed here is a height that won't exceed 35 feet, they'll be one to two stories, and have a minimum of a one-car, I'm sorry, I'm reading off the attached. The detached homes will be 35 feet in height, one or two stories, have covered front entries, and optional back patios, as well as two-car front-entry garages, and be a minimum of three bedrooms with a minimum of 1,600 square feet. As far as architectural material that you see here, they'll, they've committed to a four-sided 24-inch minimum water table that will be either brick or stone, all four, and that's for all four facades, all four facades will also be brick, stone, or a fiber-cement board, with the exceptions of the soffit, which are, of course, would be vinyl trim. As far as the attached product, the attached product is going to be, not to exceed the same 35 feet, will be one or two-story minimums. It says have a minimum one-car entry, but if you notice in the elevations, those are two-car entries, there's a little bit of inconsistency with the, with what's shown, and what's there, we'll have that sorted out before the, the public hearing. They will contain a minimum of two bedrooms and a minimum of 1,300 square feet. As far as materials, it'll be subject to the same standards as the detached homes, so you're looking at a 24-inch brick or stone water table on all four sides, and then brick or stone and cement fiber on all four facades, with of course the vinyl soffit and trim. All right, as far as parking goes, the single-family detached project, portion of the project can provide four spaces within the driveway. The single-family attached project is proposing 64 spaces be provided in that rear-entry driveway, and they're required to have 106, so you're, this is another area where they'll need an exception, since they're unable to meet that full requirement, and they're requesting an exception for 42 garage spaces to count towards parking. Those are going to meet the requirements of our zoning ordinance according to size, and to be constrained by the CCRs to only be used as parking. As far as guest parking that's provided on site, it's kind of centrally located around the attached. You will see three spaces that are associated with the tot lot and walking trail slash fitness trail that is provided as an amenity. There are five spaces located just south of the two northern attached unit buildings, and then 10 spaces at the very southern portion of the attached units, and that's also where the mail kiosk is located in that area. As far as the other open space outside of the walk-in trail and fitness trail that I just mentioned, tot, and tot lot, they are also providing a type C buffer along the rear of the property where those, some of those single-family detached homes in the county are most near the homes that would be built in this neighborhood, and then a 20-foot wide open space area along Old Salem Road, they're proposing to plant with type A planting, so it's not going to be a type A width, it's proposed to be 20-foot wide, but it'll have the same plantings as a type A buffer would. So I mentioned there were four exceptions in this PRD, I'll just recap those quickly. On the detached product, the second front yard, they're requesting that be reduced from 35 feet to 25 feet, so you're looking at a 10-foot reduction there. On the attached product, the front where the, front where the building would be facing, they're requesting a reduction from 35 feet to 20 feet, and then on the second side, there would be And then on the second side, there would be, also under our ordinance, be classified as a front, they're requesting a reduction from 35 feet to 15 feet, so that's a 20-foot reduction. And then the required parking exception for those additional 42 spaces that are not able to be accounted for in the driveways at the rear of those attached units. So as far as the future land use plan, it identifies this area as suburban residential. So suburban residential is, I did in our comprehensive plan, as having a density range of one to four dwelling units per acre and recommends our zoning districts from RS-15 to RS-10, as well as mentions PRD is acceptable as well to allow for cluster developments, which allows for smaller lot sizes are permitted as long as the overall density is met and the remainder of the land is preserved in open space. So Old Salem is proposing 3.5 units per acre, so they're meeting that overall density requirement but are proposing minimum 6,000 square foot lot sizes for the detached portion of the project. And then they are also including some attached homes, and this is a little more consistent with what we would see for auto-urban residential, but it does meet that overall density requirement for the suburban residential. The Planning Commission will need to determine whether the rezoning request in its view is consistent with that SR land use character, which permits cluster development in a PRD. And kind of, the reason for this is that PRD mentions cluster development and smaller lot sizes, not necessarily change in housing types, which the attached homes would be a little bit of a change in housing type versus a detached product. Planning Commission will need to discuss the rezoning and schedule a public hearing. Staff is recommending the public hearing for November 5th. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Brian Grover with SEC is here representing the applicant and can answer any questions as well.
Does the applicant have a presentation or no?
He does not.
Okay. So I've got a question. It sounds like that the attached is going to be a single-car garage, so how many cars can be parked in the driveway?
Yeah, and what information we've been provided right now, they would be able to park at least two cars in that driveway. And Chair Halliburton, this is where I mentioned, the elevations they're providing us actually show what would be a two-car garage, while the language says one car is what would be permitted. So there's an inconsistency there. We need to get the applicant to clear up before the public hearing as well.
Can y'all confirm that now?
Commissioner Halliburton? I practiced this time. It is two-car garage for these units, so we'll make sure we get that fixed in there. But it would be two in the driveway, two in the garage.
Okay.
All units?
For all the townhome units.
All the townhome units, yeah.
Yes.
And the same requirement would be that the covenant would be that they're supposed to use the garage for parking, correct?
Correct, yes. In the zoning ordinance today, there is a subclause that states a specific language that's going to be needed to make sure that that requirement can be utilized, and we'll make sure we utilize that language.
Okay, thank you. Glad to hear it's two cars. Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to set a public hearing?
Move to set the public hearing on November 5th.
Second.
Vice Chair Eva Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye. Next item on the agenda is staff reports and other business.
Can I make an introduction first?
Yes.
So we have a special guest in our audience, Ms. Maria Routen, who is, who has long been a permit technician in the Building and Codes Department. She was recently promoted to Development Coordinator, a new position that was, that was created. She'll still be working out of our Building and Codes Department, but she will be kind of an ombudsman, if you will, for the development community, making sure that their projects keep moving, coordinating between her department and our, and our department and other departments as well to make sure that, that we keep projects moving and that we're, that we're, you know, continuing to provide great customer service to our stakeholders. And so Maria has long been an outstanding person to work with in the Building and Codes Department. Always great to, always ready to help out, not only customers but colleagues in other departments, including the Planning Department as well, and we're so happy for her. We know she's going to do a great job with that new position.
So Maria, it sounds like you're going to be the developer's new best friend.
Matthew, will she be working within City Works to do that?
Yes, yes. Be working within City Works as well as, as well as just good old-fashioned phone calls and emails to make sure things, things get through. So you have before you under Staff Reports and Other Business, two calendars. We'll need, we'll need two separate motions. We have the consideration of the 2026 Planning Commission Meeting Calendar. And Mr. Wright, I always make sure that, that we try to avoid spring break and fall break. And the 2026, 2027 school calendar is not out yet, but I know we avoided it for spring break, and we can always modify the calendar for fall break for next year if we, if we need to. But unless you have any concerns about any of the dates that are proposed for the Planning Commission Meeting Calendar, I would request that you vote to approve it.
So move.
Second.
Vice Chair Eva Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye. The next item is the consideration of the 2026 Plan Review Calendar.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Halliburton. The Plan Review Calendar is what our staff and the development community live and die by, the submittal dates and deadlines. So a lot of, lot of internal dates and deadlines in there, but it goes hand in hand with our Planning Commission Meeting Calendar. And unless you have any issues with, with anything proposed in it, we would request your approval of that calendar as well.
Good for approval.
Second.
Vice Chair Eva Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Halliburton?
Aye. And then our next item is a monthly update from the Director of Land Management and Planning.
And Mr. Halliburton, if I may, I left out an introduction of another employee we have. Mr. Kendall Thierical is our new intern for this semester. He is a graduate student in International Affairs and Public Policy, I believe, in, at MTSU, so he is actually doing this for his practicum, for his master's degree. And so we're happy to have him on board for the fall semester as well, and we continue to enjoy the partnership that we have with MTSU in providing a good learning experience for their students. And they've always provided us with, with good students who are eager to learn and help us out with our, with our responsibilities.
Welcome. Mr. Newman?
Thank you, Chair Halliburton and members of Planning Commission. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation for you today. Apologize, Darren, because I don't have one. But, but I do just want to go over a few things, give you some updates on where we are. So first, staffing. As you know, we've been searching for an engineer. We typically have three on staff in the Planning Department, and now we have two. And we've been searching for that third engineer, and it's just really had a difficult time filling that position. It is a, it is a difficult position to fill. We knew it would be going in, so we, we thought we had somebody on the hook there, and then they took another position somewhere else. And so we're opening that back up, get that back up on the top of the search engines that are out there on the internet so that people can see those, and we'll keep searching for an engineer. On the planner, we do have an open planning, planner position, and we have an offer out. We're awaiting a response on that. We have a very good candidate, qualified person, so we're hoping to hear back very soon on that. And the zoning inspector, if you'll remember, we created an additional zoning inspector position, and so we've, we've gone through rounds of interviews on that. We have another really good candidate. We're checking references on that, and should those check out appropriately, then we'll have an offer in that position as well. That would put us fully staffed, other than the engineer, if those two positions are filled, so we're, we're looking forward to that. Move on to some of the projects that we're working on. We're working on the Design Guidelines Update. We are, we're still moving forward with that. We've had multiple meetings. We've gone through formal open spaces. We've gone through materials, and we'll continue to move forward. We have two or three more meetings on that, and then once we get those put in a form that can be digested for the Planning Commission, we'll, we'll bring that forward. But we're still probably another three or four months out on those. But good, a lot of good feedback. We're working with our stakeholders that, that come through our department fairly often, and we have a lot of good input and buy-in on some of those changes. So really, really looking forward to that. On the Cherry Lane Corridor Study, I know there was an update given to council at the last meeting, so I'll just give a very brief overview on the Cherry Lane Corridor Study. So our team of experts has really been diving into what the road designs would look like and what those road designs would do as far as connections that we have with existing infrastructure. So a lot of analysis has been going into that. We've been looking at that in conjunction with growth models and making sure that the growth models that are being used are accurate and real growth models, and so that's been a point of discussion as well. The next steps that we'll be looking at for the Cherry Lane Corridor Study is, will include analysts, analysis for the projected land use. So that's where our side of things start to come into play a little bit more, so we're looking to dig into that and contribute as well. So that's where we are on those two studies. We also have, typically I've been giving you a little bit of numbers on where we are with some of our meetings, and so just generally, our meetings have, all around, been just a little bit down with pre-application meetings, due diligence meetings, and public inquiry meetings overall. I was looking at some of our permitting numbers and looking historically through just new builds, for example, are, have been down in August compared to July. And then in September, we're, we're catching up, we're about halfway through, so we're catching up to where we were last year in permit new builds. But overall, if we're looking for the, the year, it's sort of going down on new builds. So just a little bit of an update, we see that with, I think with plating, we have some more inventory that'll come online with some plating that we have coming up with some final plating. So I think overall, healthy, just a little decline.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. With that, does anybody else have anything? Yes, Matthew?
And it'll be brief, I promise. Was texting with Mr. Gore. I know several of you asked before the meeting about tomorrow's stakeholder meeting at the airport. He did confirm that it is the same meeting that, that you all heard from him at last month's Planning Commission meeting and, and that Ms. Eva Water and Mr. Wright, that y'all heard at council as well. So it is optional for Planning Commission members to attend, and, and so you're, you're more than welcome to attend, but wanted to let y'all know that that's, that your attendance is not mandatory. The other thing is, is as we approach the end of the year, that means that, that the state mandated four hours of training is, is due for the Planning Commission. Haven't seen any, any training opportunities come across my email of late, but I'll be looking for those. And if, if, if there is nothing else that is provided, TAPA, our State Chapter of the American Planning Association, always provides a four-hour Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals member training session that they always record, and you can watch at your leisure as long as it is watched before December 31st. So I'll continue to keep everybody posted on that so that we can make sure we, we comply with the, the state requirements. And that's all I have, Mr. Halliburton.
All right. If no one has anything else, we're adjourned.